Good evening. Called at order this November first, two thousand twenty-three council workshop meeting will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Okay, first we have an opportunity for the public to be heard. If there's anybody here who would like to comment on any issue for our government, please, please come up to the podium. We'll need your, your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Jen McDuffie. I live at seven oh two North Pitt Street for nine weeks now. And my husband and I are avid cyclists. And we previously lived in a city Durham, North Carolina, which has worked really hard on its bike pad infrastructure. And I had about twenty years' worth of helping them with that. One of the reasons we wanted to move to Carlisle was the potential for really good alternative transportation infrastructure here. Now, our house is on Pitt Street and my husband's shop is on Spruce Street. And currently, there is no really bike-friendly way to ride a bike or get between the two. However, we understand that the Frog Switch property is currently for sale. And we think that its development is a golden opportunity to put in what we've learned to call light individual transportation paths. And that's a path that's wide enough to be used by pedestrian cyclists, people in wheelchairs or with walkers, moms with strollers or kids on skateboards. And we've casually mentioned it to a few of the neighbors we've met around Spruce Street. And they actually like the idea. So, um, we've been told that it's currently zoned industrial and that the council is considering changing it to urban mixed use. And so one of the things we want to say is that we're really in favor of you guys doing that. We think it's a great idea. Because we'd really hate to see really big warehouses with all those trucks go in on that piece of property. And we think that the path that I described would fit right into the urban mixed-use model because I read about it on the website. And I was like, oh, you know, um, some kind of alternative transportation path could really fit into the idea of that zone. So I don't know if it would be helpful, and you guys probably already know about this. But I went to a Clean Air Board meeting. And Bridget Meyer, who's a lawyer with Penn Future, presented a suggested wording from Penn Future for a model logistics use zoning ordinance. Those are her words, not mine. And it limits the square footage of storage facilities allowed within certain zones to twenty-five thousand square feet, which may be another way to preclude those ugly huge warehouses. Um, so I had Bridget send me the slides. You guys may already have them from the cab, but if you don't, I'd be happy to send them to you. And so basically, um, it's just that Penn Future has an idea of how to keep a certain kind of zone, I guess the word's regulated. And then the idea of having, um, a bike ped lane in that area with the urban mixed-use model. We just think it would be a wonderful use of that property and wanted to make the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I love when the cyclists come out. It's been just about every month, too. So keep coming. Uh, is there any other, uh, public comment here this evening? Do we have any, any by Zoom? Do we have, do we have Council Hicks by Zoom? I think I heard it. We did. I keep looking at, I keep looking my left. I'm not going to get used to that. Um, so why don't we, why don't we take care of that, that item? I'll, I'll need a motion to approve Council Hicks attending by the D of Conference.
So moved.
Um, I'll take motion from Council Malley. We'll call that a second from the Deputy Mayor. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Welcome officially, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, friends.
Um, next, uh, there are no presentations. We'll move on to meeting minutes. Uh, I entertain a motion, uh, Council to review and approve the October fourth, two thousand twenty-three workshop meeting minutes. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor is our second, second, second by Council Stube. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Public Works Committee, Council Paris.
Um, so my job is pretty easy tonight. Um, water treatment plant, um, PFOS evaluation, staff update. All right. Good evening, everyone. At the end of last year, Borough Council authorized a engineering evaluation of, uh, various techniques that could be implemented in our water treatment plant for removal of a type of man-made chemical that has a, a very strong carbon to fluorine bond that makes it very difficult to destroy naturally in the environment. Uh, that's, that's PFAS, which is also referred to as the forever chemical. Uh, since that authorization, we've been working with our engineering consultants and also with, uh, the water treatment plant staff, Jeff McKenzie, our senior operator is here this evening. Uh, and we've been going through a rounds of, of sampling for, um, various PFAS parameters in both our wild water and our finished water. And have been doing some modifications to our processes to see what impact, if any, uh, that would have on PFAS. Uh, in addition to that, our engineering consultant has been, uh, looking at various treatment alternatives and whether those alternatives would be appropriate for our water source. And, uh, what impact that would have on our treatment plant from the standpoint of footprint as well as operations and cost. So this evening, Jamie Shambaw, uh, is here, uh, from Gannett Fleming to give you a presentation on, uh, the results of that evaluation today.
Thank you, and I'm happy to be here to talk about PFAS. Uh, I, uh, drinking water is, is what I do. I, I love uh, high-quality drinking water and I'm very interested, interested to talk about PFAS and I hope you uh, en- enjoyed the conversation as much as I do. And, and I did kind of, uh, just going to give a, a background as Mark mentioned of what has been done, what, what the status is, uh, now and what the recommended, uh, next steps are. And as I was preparing to come in here tonight, I realized I probably, uh, you know, spoiled that with the, the title of the slide in terms of the recommended next steps, but we'll, we'll get to that at the end. I know you've talked about PFAS, uh, previously. And so you probably understand a lot of the background behind it, so I'm not going to talk a, a lot about that. I just do want to define some of the terminology at the beginning. The, the term that I use and, and a lot of the industry use is PFAS and, and that really, uh, stands for a, a broader group of these chemicals, the per and polyfluoral alkyl substances. And that's, that's why we like to use acronyms because we don't like to say those things uh, a whole lot. Um, the two that are specifically applicable to Carlisle are PFOS and, and PFOA. And I'll show you some, some data on those, uh, later. But tho- those are just two of, of many, uh, of, of these compounds. As Mark mentioned, uh, they're very persistent in the environment, which is why you hear in the, the, the news media of them referred to as, as forever, forever chemicals. It's very hard to break those bonds and, and destroy those chemicals, so they, they stay around for, for quite a long time. They're, they're used in a lot of things, uh, water, uh, resistant, uh, clothing. Um, they're, they're used in, in a lot of consumer products, food packaging. Um, some of the bigger uses that have, have spread them into the environment are firefighting foams and, and other industrial uses. So they can be found not everywhere, but in, in a lot of places and have impacted a lot of, uh, water supplies. So this, this has been a, a big focus of the water industry is, is addressing, uh, PFAS. And so why, why are we talking about that? Really, there's, there's a few drivers, uh, for, for us to be looking at the water treatment plan and how to, how to deal with PFAS and, and why we're having, uh, this discussion this evening. First, uh, on the list is, uh, a PADP regulation. Uh, this, this was, uh, the first uh, reg- regulation that, that PADP, uh, has implemented on their own. Typically, they're following along, uh, with EPA's lead. But, you know, they, they felt it necessary to, to implement, uh, an MCL, uh, which, uh, sampling for that will begin in, in twenty twenty-four. So again, this is, this is something that the borough is actually uh, ahead of the curve on, addressing ahead of time. Staff has been looking at this and, and sampling for this and, and you're really in a good position to, to address this related to the regs. But, um, EPA has, has also, uh, issued draft regulations that are expected to be finalized in the fourth quarter of, of this year, uh, maybe fourth quarter of this year or early next year. And, and those regs are different than the DEP regs, so you need to consider both DEP and the EPA regulations. And then also, as staff has conveyed, uh, the, the borough has your own criteria and, and desire to provide uh, the highest quality water possible and really a desire to have, uh, PFAS compounds at, uh, non-detectable uh, concentrations. And I actually show that sort of in parentheses on, on my slide because that, that level has reduced, uh, o- over the years. And just a few years ago, the, the concentrations that are found in your water supply would have been non-detectable. But as the lab- laboratory capabilities have improved, those, uh, d- detection levels have been reduced. And so you, Mark mentioned earlier that, uh, the borough has been sampling for PFAS, uh, and more than just PFOS and PFOA, but these are, these are the compounds that are really of concern that, that have been detected. And this is, this graphic just shows, uh, those detection levels. The things you'll notice here and that I'd like to point out, there, there are some places where there are two s- samples that are sort of lined up vertically. Uh, they were collected on the same day. The reason that there's two samples is, uh, in, in those sampling events, there was a, a raw water sample collected and a finished water sample collected. So some removal has occurred in, in the treatment plant. The, the other thing that I want to point out here on these, the, the Y-axis, uh, really isn't labeled, but the units of measure, uh, for the concentrations are in parts per trillion. Uh, and, and that's an important thing to recognize related to PFAS. Is that we're talking about, uh, extremely minute concentrations of, of these contaminants and, you know, most contaminants are regulated at parts per million, some parts per billion, these in particular at parts per trillion. And just to try to put into context what that means and, uh, you know, a, a part per trillion is, is roughly, you know, if you were looking at a unit of measure, it's like one inch and sixteen million miles. Uh, so that, that's the, that's the, the, the relationship there. And, and that one, that one's easy to do the math on. I, I didn't do the math on the, the volumetric comparison, but it's, it's like a part per trillion is in the neighborhood of a grain of sand in an Olympic swimming pool. So, and, and you can see, uh, concentrations there in the four, five and six, uh, uh, range. So you envision five grains of sand in an Olympic swimming pool. That's, that's what we're detecting uh, with PFAS. Um, and so in looking at the graph, the, the green lines represent the, uh, DEP MCL for PFOS and PFOA. And you can see for both PFOS and PFOA, all the samples that have been, uh, obtained, uh, to date, particularly the finished water samples are all less than, uh, DEP's, uh, MCL. Uh, the one sample for PFOA was a raw water sample that's slightly above the MCL. And the way that those, um, the DEP regulations work, it's actually a, a four-quarter running annual average. So you would average together four quarters. And as you go, a- as you take another quarter sample, you drop the last one off, then you keep going. And, and part of that is because it's, it's also important to note that these contaminants, uh, are, are not at, particularly at these levels, it's not an acute, uh, uh, toxicity concern. It's, it's more about long-term exposure to, to these things. So, so that's, uh, also important to realize, uh, the basis of those regulations. But the, the other thing that you can note on, uh, these charts is that, um, numerous samples, particularly for PFOA, uh, are greater than, uh, the proposed, uh, EPA, uh, limit for those compounds. So in addition to the, the borough's driver to have high-quality water and non-detect PFAS, uh, there, there is a, uh, regulatory uh, driver or potential regulatory driver once that rule is finalized. And we'll talk about that schedule, uh, a little later. So, uh, the, the things that have been done to date, as Mark mentioned, uh, borough's been sampling, which is great. If, uh, if you have an issue to address, it's, it's better to know, uh, that you have that issue to address, uh, as early as possible to give you the, 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 the chance to, uh, take action on that, uh, prior to the regulatory requirements. Um, and we did complete, uh, preliminary engineering study, uh, with, with the goals of recommending a treatment process approach, uh, and a- as well as a site, a footprint, how that treatment would be integrated with the existing treatment process. Uh, and then, you know, additional regulations and, and as I mentioned on the title slide, uh, pilot testing. And I just wanted to show you, um, what we're talking about when we're talking about, uh, PFAS treatment system. This is, this is just an example, uh, system, uh, um, that I could, uh, pull a good isometric, uh, to, to show you, but essentially, most of these systems are, uh, two-vessel pairs with a, a lead vessel and a lag vessel. So all of the, the water, um, that's being treated first goes through a lead vessel, which re- removes, uh, most of the, of the PFAS. And then it, it is piped to the top of a second vessel, goes through that vessel, the, the lag vessel primarily for polishing. So as you're consuming the absorption capacity in the lead vessel, uh, some will start to leak through that and then you have essentially, uh, brand-new media, uh, to remove that in the lag. When the media in the lead vessel becomes exhausted, uh, you're, you, you change that out. And the, the piping that's between those vessels allows you to switch the flow path, so you can use what was previously the, the polishing vessel. You can, it's partially exhausted. Now you can make that the lead. Your, your fresh media, uh, becomes the lag. And on the right there are just a couple examples of, um, the, the treatment media, uh, that, that we considered. Uh, the one on the left is granular activated carbon, uh, much like you would find in, in a Brita filter or maybe a filter that you put in your, uh, refrigerator. Um, and the, the graphic above that shows, uh, empty bed contact time. So that's the amount of time we need to keep the water in contact with that media to, to get good removal. And the one on the right is an example of, uh, a, a resin, uh, ion exchange media. Uh, those are small resin beads that are charged, um, much like in a home water softener that you might have that, that really holds on to one ion, but it really prefers a different one. So when it sees that one, it gives this one up, grabs that one, and, and that's, uh, sort of how that works. And, uh, the, some of the advantages there are much shorter empty bed contact times, so your equipment can be smaller. And that's really shown on the next couple of graphics. This is a very preliminary floor plan of a layout of GAC technology. And I showed those, uh, units previously in pairs. And you can see, um, from this graphic that we would need about five pairs of GAC vessels. They're twelve-foot diameter each. So fairly large, uh, building. And the, uh, same planned layout for ion exchange technology shown here, just, uh, three-vessel pairs. So it allows for a much smaller footprint and, uh, lower building costs. And, and that really comes into play on your treatment plant site. And we did look at numerous, uh, uh, potential sites for this. And without getting into the details of how it fits into the, the treatment process, it's much preferred to keep this on the existing treatment plant site. The, the graphic being shown now, um, shows how the GAC system, being much larger, would, would lay out on the treatment plant site. Consumes a lot of the, the rear of the site. And, and there are some concerns a- about impinging on some, uh, wetlands that are, uh, to the rear there. And we certainly want to avoid that. And this shows the, the same layout with ion exchange technology, which fits, um, much more neatly onto the site. You'll also notice there that, uh, that red box is covering a bit of the existing treatment plant, which, uh, was actually something that, uh, we, we came up with, uh, staff actually suggested in, in our meetings. That's a garage, uh, that, um, you know, doesn't need to be used as a garage and we can actually use a part of that, uh, space for PFAS treatment. And so the big question is always is, well, what, what is this going to cost? And as part of this study, uh, we prepared, um, very, uh, preliminary. These are planning conceptual level, uh, opinions of cost. Mostly to, uh, provide an idea of order of magnitude cost, but also for comparison of, of the treatment technologies. Obviously, ion exchange was preferred from a footprint standpoint, but we wanted to look at what that would, uh, mean in terms of, uh, the cost differential. And actually, because of the smaller equipment and the smaller, smaller building requirements, ion exchange, uh, is not only the preferred treatment technology, but, but also, uh, potentially the, the lower-cost, uh, alternative. How- however, uh, it does require, uh, pilot testing. And, and we, we recommend pilot testing in this case, uh, for either ion exchange or GAC because we are treating very low concentrations, uh, of, of PFAS and because it's a surface water source. We, we've done many, um, PFAS treatment systems. There are many in operation, uh, through, throughout the country. Most of those are on groundwater sources that, uh, have more stable water quality. Surface water is a bit different with higher concentrations of organics, variable concentrations of other ions during the season. So, so we recommend confirming, uh, the treatment selection through, uh, some pilot testing to, to address, uh, those variable, uh, water quality, uh, criteria. And at the same time, uh, for schedule purposes, we, we do recommend beginning, uh, preliminary design of the treatment facility while, uh, doing pilot testing. And I'll show the schedule, uh, here on the next slide, but the, the reason for that is really just to, uh, prepare for, um, potential funding opportunities and to, to remain sort of ahead of the curve in terms of the compliance schedule. Um, and the idea behind that, behind going to twenty-five percent is to, to do things that would need to be done anyway, geotechnical, environmental surveys, uh, topo surveys, things that would be done regardless of the treatment technology and wouldn't be wasted effort, um, in the event that, that the recommended treatment technology, uh, changes. And then as part of that, there, there are a few other things at the treatment plant that were identified as part of, uh, an FPP inspection. Very minor things, changes in chemical feeds and, and that would be done, uh, at the same time as the, uh, preliminary design. And finally, uh, just a very preliminary project schedule, very simple project schedule. Pilot testing for surface water typically takes six to nine months. Um, preliminary design that, that I mentioned is much shorter, just about three months, um, which, which does potentially leave a gap there. Sometimes the, the answer i- is apparent in pilot testing after three or four months. And you may just still have to complete it for DEP's purposes, but you could move on, uh, sooner. But ultimately, the, 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 the point here is that the total project is two-plus years, uh, to, to get this done. And, and that's, uh, you know, why it is important to move forward with this because, uh, from a regulatory standpoint, once the EPA rule is finalized in the draft, uh, the, the draft provides three years for compliance. And, and so, um, that doesn't leave a lot of time. And so that's why it is important, uh, to move forward with, with the next steps, uh, relatively soon. And that was really all I had.
I, I, I did want to point out a couple of things. Um, so, um, using the information that was generated as part of the preliminary, preliminary evaluation, we incorporated those costs and that schedule in, uh, the twenty twenty-four draft budget, which you'll be looking at, uh, late this month. Uh, so there's costs in for twenty twenty-four for the, uh, design work. And then costs in twenty twenty-five for construction, uh, the start of construction. Uh, a couple of things, uh, that, that, uh, that wasn't mentioned in the, um, presentation, I just want to point out. Um, you know, based on the sampling we've done to date, we're in compliance with, with DEP's regulations, but EPA's regulations, if, if, if it's detectable, uh, you're out of compliance and we don't want to be in that position. Uh, also, there will be a lot of other water treatment facilities across the country that are, um, that will be in the same situation as us needing to implement, uh, these, uh, these, uh, treatment, uh, improvements. And we will be competing against them. We will be competing against them for funding. We will be competing against them for, uh, environmental permitting space and also for contractors and equipment suppliers. So it, it's much more, uh, beneficial to, uh, borough to, um, act in a prompt manner as opposed to waiting until EPA's regulations become, become finalized. The, um, we, we will, um, be getting a proposal for, for that work and, and, uh, be presenting that to council likely either at the, this, at the December, December meeting after you take action on the budget or perhaps in the G and W, uh, depending on, you know, your preference.
Are there any questions?
Um, you mentioned funding opportunities. So are there going to be a lot of federal grants for this or do you know?
Ye- yes, um, it, that's a complicated answer at this point. But I'll, I'll give you the, I'll give you the brief answer. There, there actually is existing, uh, grant money, uh, for treatment of what's titled emergent contaminants, which PFAS certainly is one. And, um, that is being administered in, in Pennsylvania through, uh, the Penn Vest program. Uh, and, and they are potentially, you know, full-fund, uh, grants. But there are the, the complicating factor as it stands right now, uh, because the concentrations don't exceed uh, DEP's limits, the, the, the borough currently, um, may not, uh, qualify for those grants. Ho- however, we expect that to change upon, uh, passage and, and finalization of the EPA rule. Ultimately, they are federal funds, uh, so we expect the borough to be eligible. Then it just will become a matter in each funding cycle of, uh, you know, the prioritization of, of the project. So uh, yes, there's a lot of money available. It's, it's a little bit unclear in terms of qualifications.
I, I, I would add that, um, Penn Vest has certain requirements and, uh, before you can actually apply for funding. And one of those requirements is that you have your design completed and your permit in hand. And, you know, that could take some time to, to get done as we compete against others.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Mark. That was actually something that I wanted to point out in the schedule part of this, and that's why it is a big advantage, uh, to, to be early on that, um, and have permits in hand and be able to be one of the more early applicants, uh, when funding is available and competition should be less.
And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have already had initial conversations with Penn Vest, correct?
Uh, yes, we have. Uh, the other thing to point out, uh, Penn Vest is primarily a low-interest loan. And, um, their policy in the past was providing grant funding only to make the project affordable based on your current user rates. And they have formulas for what a, uh, affordable user rate is. So, uh, it's not guaranteed that grant funding is available.
Any other questions? What, what's the current detectable level of P F O S?
These are, these are all great questions. Uh it, it, it does move. It does depend on the laboratory. Uh but c- currently, most labs uh it, it. For some time, and Mark had mentioned earlier, earlier this year, the detection limit was right around the four. That is the EPA limit. Most labs now are providing uh a two or a three, so ju- just below uh the proposed EPA limit.
Yeah, the, the other thing to point out is that this is a very um evolving uh issue. Um as, as Jamie mentioned, just two or three years ago. Uh the federal uh guidelines for um health exposure was seventy parts per trillion. And then now it's point zero zero four or three, depending on the, the, the uh type of P F O S substance. So eh just a market drop. Uh the, the other item of, of interest is that um. You know, the, as, as we learn more and more, um and as laboratories get better and better. That detection level goes down and down and down. And then, you know, makes things even more uh of a concern because of that um, that very low health uh guideline uh level.
And regardless of which treatment media we use, that treatment media is capturing the, the P F O S. What then happens with the treatment media?
Yeah, so currently um the uh manufacturers of the, of the media. Uh you would typically contract with them. They, they re- remove it uh and, and replace it. Um in, in terms of the G A C media, um it, it either is. Disposed of in, in an appropriate landfill, or it can be regenerated with appropriate uh air, air quality. On, on the regeneration system. The resin media um is removed and replaced currently in, in all uh water treatment facilities. The, the resin media can be um, can be regenerated. So just like your home water softeners or, or, or those kind of things where you apply um, you know, a higher concentration. Um you know, salt solution. For P F O S, it actually requires uh, you know, steam uh and, and heat. So it's not something that's currently being done on site, but actually at, at manufacturer facility. So uh the exchange resin um, you know, can be uh regenerated that way.
And then what, what happened? This is just a lot of curiosity, I guess. What, what happens when they do, when they do that process with the steam or the heap? Where, where do the P F O S go?
Yeah, so that's actually a big focus of research and I, I can't tell you ultimately what the manufacturers do with P F O S. But that, that's a big focus of the university research uh right now. And, and there are, and, and you may have seen processes, there periodically, there are articles that describe. Uh techniques to um destroy uh P F O S. Um that they aren't being commercially applied now. They, they typically require high temperatures, et cetera. So they're not, they're not applicable to the full uh flow stream of a treatment plant. It's not practical to heat seven M G D. But, but it is practical to heat and apply um, you know, some common pH adjustment chemicals to smaller batches of that. Regenerate from uh, from the ion exchange. That's not currently being done commercially, but uh it is an expectation that, that ultimately that is, is where uh the industry will go. Great question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go, Council Stewie.
Regarding the two types of technology, the G A C versus the ion exchange. Is there a significant difference in the lifespan of the, the technology? You know, how, how long of a lifespan does one of them have versus the other? Does that factor into the cost?
Um yes, uh it, it, it does. The uh, the, the ion exchange resin uh typically treats uh many more bed volumes. Uh and that's, that's how we, that's how we compute it. So we look at the, the volume of the media bed and, and we sort of relate everything back to the bed volume. The, the ion exchange media will treat many more bed volumes, typically three or four times the amount that, that G A C will. But ultimately, in terms of the media life, they're relatively similar. Because as I showed in the, in the graphic, uh one of the advantages that you have with the ion exchange is you use a smaller media bed. So that typically offsets that. The, the typical lifespan, uh most systems are, are designed for roughly one year change outs. But, but that, those are the parts that would be confirmed in the pilot test. And that, that's extremely important so that you understand the long-term economics of, of this system. You don't want to put in a system that has a lower capital cost initially. And then uh, you know, have much more frequent change outs. That's a lot of work for the operations staff as well as uh higher cost. Because that, that also is one of the, the disadvantages of the ion exchange resin. It's, it's more expensive on a, a, a volume or pound for pound uh basis. Uh but we did, and I didn't really mention it as part of the study. We did look at uh a twenty-year present worth uh based on the, the mathematical projections. Of the uh efficiency and life of the media. And the, the capital cost difference uh essentially played out through the, the twenty-year present worth. But again, that, that is what we would love to confirm with a pilot test, so, so that we're sure of that.
Anything else? Any questions from the audience on this? We don't usually jump out on these, but we have a group here. I, I figured that hand might get raised.
Thanks for the presentation. Uh, uh, the question I have is um, is the site for the plant treatment, um is it one where?
Right, yeah, great question. So the, the treatment plant is uh adjacent to the creek. Um and, and as standard protocol and, and actually permitting requirements for these facilities. Uh all, all the equipment will need to be uh located by rule above the, the hundred-year flood. Typically, uh we extend that uh a bit uh because as, as you mentioned, uh that many. Uh systems have experienced multiple hundred-year uh floods uh, you know, in a short period of time. So that, that equipment uh will, will be raised uh well above the, the flood level. The, the good thing about the P F O S treatment equipment though is that it's um. There's not a lot of electrical uh equipment. Uh these, as I showed, are, are steel vessels with media, few flow meters, manual valves. So they're, they're really not subject uh to a lot of damage from uh, from, from water or flooding.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just have one quick comment. I just appreciate all of this. I appreciate that we contract out to an organization that can. Help us think through these very complex uh scenarios that we're trying to stay ahead of the game and that we, you know, I, I just. It, it's an, an educational moment for me to understand all of this, but I appreciate everyone that puts this time in. Because it really does help set up our borough to be in the best possible place. So when they look at the budget and see how much we spend on things, we have rationale and we work hard. And I just want to say thank you for, for everything you brought forward today.
Thank you. Alright, we'll uh turn off the faucet on that one and flush the toilet next. That's your, that's your cue. Thank you, Mark. That's, that's what I was going for.
Okay, um great. So uh the other item on the agenda is, is um. Uh report on uh the biosolids management uh evaluation that we've been undertaking. So at the end of last year, uh council also authorized an, an evaluation of. How we deal with uh biosolids that are generated in our wastewater treatment plant. So biosolids are the, are the biological material left over through our treatment process. And it, it comprised primarily of organic matter that is loc- that is in the, in the wastewater. That settles out um in, in settling tanks or the uh, the bacteria that we use to help treat the water. Uh the, the leftover bacteria, so we have to waste some of that every, every, every so often. Uh currently, uh we take that material and um we treat it using a lime addition. And the lime is added to for um a stabilization uh method to um. To essentially sterilize any, any pathogens that could be present in the waste. And then we haul it out um and apply it to primitive agricultural sites throughout Cumberland County. I think Jeff Heimball is, is on Zoom. Uh Jeff is our, is our biosolids manager. Um and uh he, he works with area farmers to um, to uh. Uh accept our, our biosolids and also he, he works with them from the standpoint of making sure that. Uh the amount of biosolids that we add to the, to the farm fields are appropriate from the standpoint of the uh agronomic. Demand for the fertilizing components that are in there, so the nitrogen and the phosphorus. You can only apply some, enough that would satisfy the, the growing needs of, of whatever crop uh the farmer puts on. Um so uh I, I, I do have some uh, some samples here that I'll pass around. And um uh this is a example of, of the uh, of our biosolids. And when you look at it and you say biosolids, well, it's really not solid. It's about um. This is, this is um about ninety-eight percent uh water and two percent solids. And this is um our thickens, our thickened uh sludge before it's, before it's pasteurized with lime. And this is our uh lime stabilized solids. It's about ninety-five percent water and five percent solids. And this is the material that's, that's hauled um to uh farm fields and applied. About how many loads a year? Twelve hundred truckloads a year of, of this material, uh six thousand gallon uh tanker truck. So we contracted uh with our engineering consultant after going through a uh, don't, don't open the lids by the. We, we contracted with our engineering consultants uh to look at a, a variety of, of, of alternative processes. And you know, we're, we're, we're looking at uh these, these processes. We're, we're, we're looking over a long timeframe. So our existing treatment plant was constructed in nineteen eighty. It's now twenty twenty-three, going to twenty twenty-four. So the facility is over forty years old. Um so decisions that we make over the next uh couple of years are going to take us out. Uh at least twenty years, if not longer. And uh some of the things that Nick will talk about uh is, you know, how do we best position ourselves? So that the decisions we make today um take us through that twenty-year or thirty-year period. And put us in a position that we um can be proper stewards of the environment. So Nick, you want to uh?
Thank you, Mark. And handing out the samples right off the bat, man, gets everybody's attention, so. Uh so yes, let me just give you a, a, an update on what we've been doing the last six or eight months here with this uh, this. Biosolids management plan study. Uh what I want to cover today is basically uh expand on what Mark was talking about with your current operations. Uh discuss the components of the plan that we've been working on for the last eight to ten months. Talk about the detailed evaluation that we did, the alternatives that we're looking at, uh give some comparisons of those alternatives. And of course, uh go over the costs uh that are associated with each of them. So current handling uh process, Mark said, uh pretty much summed it up very nicely. So a liquid lime slurry uh stabilization process. It's been used for forty years without much upgrades or improvements. It's served the borough well for forty years. Um although, you know, it, what it produces, uh the jar there. I would refer to as kind of a marginal quality product. Uh there's some odor issues associated with it, the big thing. Certainly the volume is a challenge as well. So um again, here's seven million gallons uh that's produced and hauled out every year at the treatment plant. Equates to twelve hundred tanker truckloads out in the streets uh transporting to farm fields. So it's a pretty um, not a complicated program, but a pretty uh ex- uh time-consuming and, and involved. Process and program uh that's operated here. A little schematic just to kind of show you uh current operations. Mark mentioned uh the tanks, they were the solids collect in the treatment process. That's the primary clarifiers. And the final clarifiers, these are big circular concrete tanks. Wastewater comes in, solids settle to the bottom. The, the clarified wastewater floats to the top and continues on for treatment and we collect that solids off the bottom. We pump it to a, to a set of gravity thickners. Again, just big settling tanks that are intended to thicken that uh, uh solids. So the, the, the two jars that came around earlier, the first one was going into that thickener. And the uh, the second uh jar was coming out of uh the sludge holding tanks. So the thickened solids from the gravity thickners go into a four, one of four, two hundred and fifty thousand gallon holding tanks. So between four, it's a million gallons of, of capacity. Uh there's a liquid lime slurry that's added. So we have dried uh lime granules mixed in, in tanker in vats with water to create a slurry. That's pumped into these tanks. Lime is what stabilizes the solids. It kills the pathogens uh and produces the biosolids. Probably over ninety percent of the, the, the biosolids that are produced are hauled out in tanker trucks, liquid form. Uh go out to uh farm fields. Um I think there's two borough employees that, that pretty much work full-time. As hauling tech, you know, full, two full-time drivers that haul the biosolids out to the fields. And one that does the actual land application at each of the sites. Try to get out as often as you can uh in good weather, but during the winter, you can't go out and put this uh, this material out in the farm fields. At that point, it has to be dewatered at the plant, so there's belt filter press. Uh that, that dewaters this material, stores it uh at the treatment plants until the spring when it can be hauled out. So the dewatered material is, we don't have a, I don't think we have any, a sample of that. But it's uh instead of five percent solids, it's twenty-five percent solids. I kind of always refer to it as kind of the consistency of like a cow patty, you know? Um and that goes in, in a truck, dump truck, goes out to the farm fields and that's land applied. Very, it's a very similar to a manure in, you know, look and, and texture. Uh so the system has worked and it's worked, you know, you know, it's provided uh a, a process for the, for the borough over the last forty years. But it is not without its problems and challenges. Um the biggest one is nuisance odors. Uh in the gravity thickners and the sludge holding tanks, uh when you add the lime. Yeah, that tends to drive off ammonia and it's, it's, it creates an odor. Uh you have million gallons of, of storage capacity in those four sludge holding tanks. Seems like a, they're big tanks. But uh when you have to keep moving this material out, uh it becomes a limiting factor. So that storage is, is, is a, is a challenge. Um lime, handling lime is, is kind of messy. It's very messy. Uh it clogs, it's, has pumping issues, uh kind of just seems to settle and float around the air and settle on everything. So uh there's maintenance issues keeping the system going. Then when you get out into the farm fields, there's the hauling expense, there's the spreading expense, there's a lot of effort there for that part as well. So uh those are just kind of a list of the challenges that uh, that, that staff deal with, with, with this process. Couple pictures here of the, of the lime system. Uh there's uh the lime silo which is, stores a couple of tons of, of the, the, the dried uh lime granules. Uh the second picture is one of these batch tanks where the lime is mixed with water to produce the slurry. Uh third picture is the lime. Third picture is the lime pump, and that pumps into that one of four sludge holding tanks, which is the last picture. Again, there are some challenges and difficulties operating the system. And of course, odor has been a challenge throughout the existence of the program. Just the nature of lime or liquid lime stabilized solids. There was an incident, maybe eight to ten years ago, I believe, where there was a group of homeowners around one of the farm sites that banded together and had, I guess, had issued complaint or maybe sued the borough for a land application program. And there was some litigation and, you know, it was a process. You know, and again, it's really just odor driven, most of these things. People don't really know about a bio solids program until they smell it, and then it's too late. So this study, why are we doing a bio solids study? I think Mark pretty much hit the nail on the head. You know, we're looking to develop a plan for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. You know, we want to have an affordable, cost-effective, energy-efficient, environmentally sound, sustainable plan. Obviously, your current process has run for forty years. Hopefully, whatever we come up with will take you through the next forty years. Couple of challenges and drivers to talk about here. I said before, odor is really a big one. You know, people don't, once people smell bio solids, they don't forget it. So, you know, you want to really make sure that odor is controlled and mitigated. More and more, there's competition for bio solids. You know, for the longest time, bio solids were looked at as something that you had to get rid of. And so you were competing with other people and other things to get rid of. Whether that was competing with farmers that had manure, that needed to put that on their farm fields or other bio solids or other things when it comes to farm application and landfill. There's competition with landfill. A lot of landfills are starting to push back and not want as much organics in the landfill. And those are the two primary disposal or beneficial uses that have historically been used for bio solids. Although there are some opening, some other things that are opening up as well. So odor competition, Mark touched on the phosphorus. This is a regulation that's coming down from DEP, seems likely in the next year or two. As Mark mentioned, bio solids are land-applied based on the agronomic loading rate or loading needs of the crop for their nitrogen content. Because of the ratio between nitrogen and phosphorus of the bio solids, when you provide the crop with enough nitrogen, you're over-applying phosphorus. And so now the state is looking at that, trying to regulate that. And probably they're going to require agronomic loading rates based on phosphorus in the future, which essentially means that we're going to be having to apply less, we're going to be able to apply less bio solids per acre. So for a certain amount of bio solids, we're going to have to have more farmland to apply it. And then of course, what Jamie mentioned, PFAS. You know, there's, while there are lots of regulations and things moving on the water side of things, there's not as much firm or certainty on the wastewater side. I would say regulatory uncertainty is kind of what we're faced with on the wastewater side right now. You know, the science and the policies are really evolving. There's some hysteria in some ways, you know, maintenance last year completely banned land application of bio solids just through the state. So that's scary. I mean, it hasn't trickled in, it hasn't happened in any other states, but it happens one place, you never know. So there is an uncertainty and a risk there that is concerning. But it's not all bad news. There are opportunities and some strengths that we can leverage here from the existing facility and the existing program when we look at this, when we look at a new program. The two single biggest opportunities that we have is the land application program. Mark mentioned that Jeff has developed and brought in, I think it's two, over two thousand acres of permitted farmland. I think thirty to forty farmers are in the program. So that's been. Sorry. I was thinking I should have brought water with me. Sorry. I'll let you get me the water as I'm talking. So the land application program existing is great as well as existing infrastructure. There's plenty of tanks, plenty of buildings, and a lot of that can be reused. So, you know, as we go into this planning, you know, we want to, we have some drivers that we want to address. We also have some things that we can use to our advantage. The management plan scope involves nine tasks. We're basically a task seven. We've gone through the whole evaluation. Each step of the way, there are workshops with borough staff to sit down, go over the findings, get a consensus from the group. The first four or five tasks are really just kind of quantifying solids, the conditions assessment of the facility, looking at the regulatory landscape, looking at what other facilities are doing, right? You know, there's certainly, we don't necessarily want to copy what others are doing, but it's good to know what's out there, what works, what doesn't, and where maybe our competition is. And then we seem to undertask by the non-economic decision criteria. I mean, cost is obviously a big driver, but there's lots of other things that we need to be cognizant of, you know, whether it's maintenance and operations and risk and things like that. We go through this whole thing. We take those first, the findings of those first five tasks. And we look, we do preliminary alternative selection. So we look at every option under the sun that we have available based on our goals. And the findings of those first tasks, we narrow it down to four alternatives that are most promising. And then that's what we do, a deep dive and the detailed alternatives evaluation. So when we went through this, we came up with four alternatives that seemed promising and most likely. Thanks, Jamie. All right, better. So four alternatives that we're looking at here. Post-lime treatment, autothermal thermophilic aerobic digestion, anaerobic digestion followed by thermal drying, and thermal drying followed by pyralysis. I guess it's worth mentioning, I should have mentioned at the beginning, the liquid lime slurry program that's operated now is a Class B bio solids. There's two classes of bio solids, Class A, Class B. And Class A is the higher-quality bio solids. They're both acceptable for land application. But you have to meet a little bit higher standard for a Class A bio solids. You have to meet a little bit more stringent pathogen criteria, a little bit more stringent metals limits. So right now, we have a Class B program. One of the goals was to move to Class A. So when we looked at these alternatives and what were the most promising alternatives, that was an overarching goal, was that we're just looking at processes that can get us a Class A quality bio solids. So these are the four that we, as a group consensus came to look at. And I'll talk a little bit about each one, but just quickly, post-lime treatment is the most similar to the current operations. It's a lime, it's a lime process. And we really looked at it as kind of our quote-unquote baseline. We thought it was appropriate to be able to show what a comparable process would be to make a Class A product to what you currently have. ATAD is an aerobic process. That was picked. And it had interestingly been selected as the preferred alternative in the two thousand eight bio solids study, which was probably, I think it was oh eight? Twelve maybe? Okay, about ten years, maybe ten years, ten years ago. Anaerobic digestion and thermal drying was another one, and then thermal drying and pyralysis. So just kind of high level going through these. Post-lime treatment is a process where we are simply taking the solids from the gravity thickeners. We're putting them through a de-watering unit. Here we have depicted a centrifuge, that's the little gray cylinder there. Similar in function to the belt filter press that you have now. It produces a cake. We add lime, granular lime to the dewatered cake. Right now, you're adding lime slurry to the liquid side. Here we add the lime after it's dewatered. We produce nine thousand wet tons a year, pretty similar in volume to what you're currently producing. The key, though, is because it's dewatered, you can see here it's four hundred and about five hundred truckloads a year. So instead of twelve hundred truckloads of liquid, this process, we cut it in half. And this is just a pile of what your currently dewatered lime stabilized bio solids looks like. And that's what the finished product would look like in post-lime treatment as well. Here, we're adding additional lime, so it's a Class A product. It's about twenty-five percent solids. It really is, for the most part, it's really limited to land application. And of course, the last double it there, it will have a strong odor. It's, you know, we're adding lime to raw solids, so it's kind of the same effect as what we have now. Second alternative is what's called ATAD, little schematic here. It's a two-step process and it's really a concentrated mixing and aeration process. It's an aerated process. We're getting a lot of agitation and mixing of a vessel, of a tank. And what we're doing is we're essentially the organic component or a portion of the organic component of your solids is volatilized. And so you're getting a reduction in the total volume of your solids, which also produces a stabilization, kills the pathogens. So there's a volume reduction associated with this as well as pathogen reduction. So this looks, you know, a little bit different. We have the solids from our two clarifiers. Because we need to control the thickness of the solids going into this ATAD digester, we're going to put in a rotary drum thickener, which is a mechanical thickener instead of the gravity thickeners. And we'll pump that into our ATAD process, and then that goes to a de-watering unit. And you can see the difference. So lime, nine thousand wet tons. We cut this in half with the ATAD. We're down to four thousand wet tons. And half the truckloads, we're down to two hundred truckloads that we're going out to farm fields now. This is what it looks like, very similar to the first, the post-lime treatment material. It's a cake, twenty to twenty-five percent. It's a little bit, it's kind of a little bit darker, richer color to it. It's for a land application. It's a very nice product. We've lower Allen down the road utilizes ATAD and they have a lot of farmers that are interested in it, and it's a very low odor. Third alternative, anaerobic digestion and drying. Anaerobic digestion is the same, it accomplishes a similar goal as the ATAD process, where we're actually taking and volatilizing a portion of the organic matter. So we're looking to have some stabilization and volume reduction. So picture on the left of an anaerobic digestion process. You can see the tank on the far left of the picture has the white dome on it. Anaerobic digestion is in the absence of air. So it's a closed vessel. It's mixed. It's heated. There's a heat exchanger where we're cycling the solids through to heat it up to about ninety-five degrees Fahrenheit. During the breakdown of that organic material, it produces a biogas, which is primarily methane. And that's what's collecting in that big white dome there. So there's sustainability and energy sustainability component to an anaerobic digestion system because we can use that gas to heat the heat exchanger, to heat the system. We can also use the gas then to run or to partially feed the dryer that we're going to talk about next. You can use it for district heating of some buildings. There's some other alternatives to that. Anaerobic digestion by itself will produce a Class B bio solids. So in order to then make it Class A, we follow the anaerobic digester with a thermal dryer. So the last two pictures you saw were a pile of dewatered material. We're taking that dewatered material and putting it through a dryer that's heating it up to anywhere from six hundred to a thousand degrees, really driving off, evaporating a lot of the water that's in there. And so we're taking it to produce a very dried material that almost looks like soil. It's about ninety-five percent, yeah, ninety-five percent solids. And it's, you know, it's almost, you know, that type is almost something you could put in a bag and sell at a Home Depot in a way as a fertilizer. It's certainly a little bit nicer of a product than just like dewatered cake. Again, just a little schematic, you know, going through a rotary drum thickener, going through our anaerobic digester, de-watering thermal dryer. Now we're down to a thousand wet tons of bio solids, which equates to, where am I at here, fifty truckloads a year. So you can see with each of these processes, we're starting at twelve hundred truckloads, tanker truckloads, and we're, you know, we're slowly working our way down. This and ATAD, we're destroying a portion of the solids and then we're dewatering them and drying them, driving off a lot of the liquids. So we're really concentrating the solids, which helps reduce the volume. This is a picture of it. I see it being passed around, but it's, you know, it's a pretty nice, round, uniform pellet. It can be used for land application, soil amendments, you know, some nurseries, plant nurseries and things like that. Or soil blenders can use the material. And it has a fairly low odor as well. Third, or I'm sorry, the fourth alternatives that we looked at here is thermal drying and pyralysis. So pyralysis is a relatively, a newer emerging technology in the bio solids field. And it's a thermal process, so it's going through a reactor here that basically is heating up the dewatered, I'm sorry, the dried material. So we're going to run it through the dryer. It's going to look like that jar that just came around. And we're going to put it through this pyralysis reactor. It's heated in the absence of oxygen to not quite combustion temperatures. And it produces a biochar, which is pretty similar to kind of how we produce charcoal. If you put wood to, in the process of taking wood and producing charcoal, is a pyralysis process. So we're putting the dried material through this reactor. We're heating it up. And there's a portion of the lighter organic material that is volatilizing off. It's turning into a gas. Anaerobic digestion, I said, there's a biogas that's produced from that. In this process, there's what they call a syn gas, a synthesis gas that's produced, which again, has a use and a purpose. It can be used for heating the reactor as well as heating the dryer and some other uses through the plant. So there's an energy recovery component to this process. So there's an energy recovery component to this process. And your material that comes out of it is what's referred to as a bio char. Uh, we have a picture of it, Mark will pass around a, another sample, but it looks very similar to the, to the de-watered, uh, pellets that you saw earlier. There's a couple real advantages, um, of pyralysis. There is some auxiliary heat that is required to start the system up, but once the process is running, it really is self-sustaining. Um, that syn gas is reused in a boiler for heating, uh, and that loop then can keep the process going once it's up and running. Um, and the big things are, are from environmental standpoint, you know, uh, energy reuse, but also it's, uh, one of the few processes that have been shown to remove PFAS from the bio solids. So, um, you know, that's, it is, is, is very intriguing. You know, we don't know where, where the PFAS regulations are going on the wastewater side, uh, but here's a process that, that can, that can address that. And of course it, it sequesters that carbon, um, reduces carbon dioxide emissions and, uh, the bio char has some additional market potential outside of just land application. Here, uh, again, we kind of talked through, uh, the process, uh, at the, at the tail end, five hundred and forty-one wet tons, which equates to a whopping twenty-seven truckloads a year. So, you know, we're, we're talking volume reduction here. You know, it's, it's, there's, we're, we're, um, running it through the, the, uh, the dryer, which is drying off a lot of the, the water, putting it through the pyralysis reactor, which is driving off a lot of the, um, the, the organic material. And what we have left is, is a pretty, um, pretty small, but a very, what is very much product. It's ninety-five percent solids, looks pretty similar to the dried material. Uh, but in addition to land application, soil amendments, um, actually it can be used in ink production is one of, is one of the, the, um, the industries that can use this bio char. One of the, the manufacturers of, uh, of the pyralysis reactors actually has been entering into long-term agreements with municipalities to take the material, as part of, as part of the process, because there is, they feel that there's, there's a market there for it, so. So there's, there's some interesting, uh, interesting additional, uh, items here with, uh, with this, uh, dryer and pyralysis alternative. Again, just to kind of show you the energy balance here, uh, which is one of the, which is one, is one of the really neat things with this process. There is a, uh, you know, let's see here, so once this system is up and running, uh, we're producing, um, the six point eight million BTUs of energy from the, in that syn gas. It's going back and recycled, uh, two point eight of that is reused to actually keep the, the pyralysis reactor running. The other, um, remaining four, uh, million BTUs goes to, to, uh, to fuel the dryer. And so the syn gas from, from the pyralysis produces half of the fuel needs of the dryer. So there's, so there's a lot of, uh, energy, um, reuse, uh, just internally inherent to the system. Been kind of showing you along the way, uh, the volume reduction, uh, which is a, just a kind of a good way to kind of compare each of these, um, processes here. So, uh, you can see, uh, the graph on the, on the right really does kind of drive home that point, you know, nine thousand, uh, wet tons, um, for the, the, the post lime treatment process. That's cut in half with the ATAD. That's cut in a quarter with anaerobic digestion and drying. And then that volume is cut in half when you do drying and pyralysis. So you can, you know, you're, you're reducing your truckloads from, you know, twelve hundred truckloads, uh, a year, uh, down to, um, five hundred, two hundred and fifty. You have, you know, a big, a big land application program developed and existing and you have plenty of, of acreage to land apply any of these materials on. Uh, but this gives you a lot of flexibility and, and, uh, and, you know, kind of helps minimize your work outside the gates when it comes to, to the land application program. We, we do these studies and look at all these, these different alternatives, because there is no perfect solution, right? There's, there's trade-offs, advantages and disadvantages, strengths and weaknesses to, to every alternative. So, um, we tried to kind of capture that here, uh, in a table. I know there's a lot of bullets here, um, but, you know, there's, there are, you know, there are advantages and disadvantages. At this point, you know, I think, we, while we haven't as a group kind of come up to a consensus of what we think is the best alternative, uh, for the borough, I think the general consensus is the post lime treatment is, is more or less, you know, kind of has a fatal flaw that, that, you know, adding lime and producing this large volume of relatively, uh, odorous material, um, it's not really a, a great alternative. Uh, but amongst the other three remaining alternatives, I think they're the, you know, we're still kind of working collectively to try to figure out what makes the most sense. So, you know, ATAD, anaerobic digestion, thermal drying, thermal drying, pyralysis, they're all, you know, very, um, very good alternatives, you know, they all would serve the borough well. They all have their advantages, disadvantages, and we're kind of working through that at the moment.
Yeah, I, I, I would add that, um, going through this, uh, process, um, you know, staff was, uh, heavily involved in it and we, uh, went out and toured facilities that used each, uh, three of these four alternatives. And, uh, the reason that we didn't, uh, tour, um, the fourth alternative, pyralysis, is there's only one, uh, facility in the country right now, uh, that uses it and, and that's in, uh, San Francisco. Um, we did have a, uh, a Zoom call with, uh, uh, one of the engineers for, uh, Silicon Valley Clean Water, the facility that, that uses that. And that was quite enlightening, uh, but it's not the same as being there and, and seeing the operation. Uh, there is another facility that's currently in construction, uh, just down the road in Efrida. They're sort of behind schedule, I think, in their construction.
They will be starting up the first quarter of next year.
Yeah, so, um, so we do have an opportunity, uh, early next year to go to Efrida and, and see how that facility is operating. This, um, it is an emergent technology, so, uh, you know, the, the discussions we had with, uh, Silicon Valley Clean Water, you know, they focused on the fact that, um, they were first generation and they, they told us some of the issues that they, they're working to, to resolve. Uh, it's going to be interesting to see, uh, how Efrida, uh, second generation model, uh, uh, addresses those issues.
Yep, yes, very, very much so. So yeah, so there's, you know, we did go through and look at, uh, look at, as Mark mentioned, four site visits and, uh, several phone calls. We've, you know, we have a list of, you know, a pretty good grasp on, on the pros and cons of each of those. And then of course then we look at from a, from a financial cost perspective. So here's our four alternatives and total project cost. So we're looking at, um, post lime treatment, ten million, uh, ATAD and thermal drying, pyralysis around twenty million and anaerobic digestion, thermal drying, a bit higher than that, around twenty-five million. Keep in mind, these are very high-level planning level costs. I tried to, you know, put in the bottom there footnote, we, we put a thirty percent contingency on all of our cost estimates. So we, we came up with costs of, of each unit process and then just put thirty percent on top of that to come up with these numbers because, uh, because of what stage we're at in the planning. But, you know, this gives you an order of magnitude of, of what we're looking at here. Taking one step further, uh, that was the total project cost. When you incorporate annual operating and maintenance costs over a twenty-year lifecycle, uh, we can come up with, uh, the net present worth, cost of each of these alternatives and it does kind of change, uh, some of the numbers a bit. Uh, you know, post lime, uh, has a pretty, uh, pretty low initial, uh, capital cost, but because of the amount of, of lime that you have to purchase and the additional manpower, um, you know, it, it's over twenty years, it's, the number, uh, gets elevated a bit. Uh, ATAD, uh, and anaerobic digestion, thermal drying are, are somewhat comparable. Thermal drying and paralysis is a bit, uh, a bit lower than those two and that's primarily, I guess, a lot of the, the energy, um, conservation and, um, recycling that occurs in that process. And that is all that we have unless there's.
Uh, I, I would like to point out that, um, similar to the, the PFAS evaluation at the water plant, uh, the twenty twenty-four draft budget does, uh, extract the information that Nick just provided to you and, uh, we have, um, money, uh, requested in twenty twenty-four for, um, um, design and then in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six for construction. And we just, uh, used, uh, the gross number of twenty-seven million, uh, for the, over those three, over that three-year period, uh, recognizing that there's still a little work that needs to be done from the standpoint of, 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 um, following, following this through completion and doing our due diligence related to, uh, the fourth alternative, uh, where, um, there's, um, very few examples of currently in operation in the United States.
Any questions?
So, uh, the thermal drying paralysis, uh, that one is a slightly lower, maybe, uh, for the present, net present worth, because it's using some of the energy that it, or the, right? So, but the anaerobic digestion, digestion, um, also is producing gas, but it's not necessarily using it in the process, but we would still have that to use elsewhere?
It is used in the process, yes.
Oh, it is.
So it's, so, so anaerobic digestion produces a, a, a biogas. It's used primarily to heat a boiler that's then used to keep the digester heated. And then any excess gas can be sent over to use to help fuel the, the, the dryer that's being operated. You know, there are other potential uses for it. I mean, uh, the, the other main use you'll, you'll see at a wastewater plant is, is oftentimes for heating different buildings in the area. But, you know, it's, that's not a big, uh, a big use of it, but, uh, those are the two main uses. Um, and there are other advantages to, you know, an anaerobic digester, you can accept hauled waste, uh, that can be put in there to help, uh, increase your gas production, you know, that you could use for other purposes. Uh, but yeah, it is used, um, to basically drive the system, very similar to what, uh, the pyralysis syn gas would do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Are, are any market potentials factor in, factored into the, the worth analysis or are they too miniscule to even bother?
Um, so what we assumed is, uh, for, for the three, the first three alternatives, um, we, we are continuing to use, uh, your existing land application program. So, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a strength and a, and a, and a, um, you know, it's, you know, it's something you don't necessarily want to give up. So we can continue to use that, there's significant savings, because we don't have the equipment and the personnel that we have to, you know, use. Uh, but we'll take advantage of the farms and the fields. Uh, and then for the bio char from the pyralysis alternative, we're assuming that that, um, there wouldn't be a cost. Uh, we're assuming it's, it's no cost. We're not assuming we're going to make money off it, but we're not going to have a cost associated with, uh, with hauling it or, or, you know, sending it out or, or assuming we can get a, uh, enter into an agreement where we can have somebody take it away for us.
Are there, are there carbon footprints available for the other processes other than pyralysis?
Yes, so what we, what we did, uh, is we developed, uh, we developed a greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions, uh, estimate for the existing, uh, treatment process. And then I think the idea is we're going to do the same for whichever is the selected alternative. So we haven't done it for any of these four alternatives yet, but once we come up with a selected, we will run that analysis, um, for comparison. But we don't have it really available for, to compare to each of the four alternatives.
I, I, I would say based on an educated, um, um, estimate that, um, post lime treatment would have the highest, uh, followed by the ATAD process, uh, anaerobic digestion, the third, and, and, and pyralysis having the lowest because of the carbon capture component of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Any other questions? Ca- Councilor Hicks, I don't, I don't want to forget you there. Oh, he hopped off, okay. So he, he won't have any questions. Okay, all right, thank, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for the samples, Mark. Okay, um, there is no new business. Is there any further public comment this evening, anybody here? Do we have anybody online? Yeah, okay, all right, then we are adjourned, thank you all.